I'm sorry, Committee of the Whole and today's date is Wednesday, October 26th. It is now 6:30 PM. And I do have a statement to read before we get into the process. In a Committee of the Whole meeting, the council hears from petitioners, staff, and the public in order to deliberate on legislation before it comes to the council for a final vote, typically during a regular session. Unlike regular sessions, the discussion we have this evening will not conclude with a binding vote, but a due-pass recommendation indicating where the council's final vote may come down to. Matters on tonight's agenda will be heard again next week during regular session. While tonight's meeting does not include an opportunity for general public comment on matters not on the agenda, members of the public will be invited to offer comments on agenda items as those items come up. We have one item on tonight's agenda, and it is Ordinance 22-31 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic regarding amending Section 15 dot 12 dot 010 Stop Intersections to change a stop intersection location to a multi-stop intersection location. This legislation is sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, and he's been asked to attend, and I believe he has someone to assist in the presentation. Okay, before we do, one more thing. That was the ordinance, and the synopsis is, "This ordinance amends Title 15 vehicles and traffic of the Bloomington Municipal Code and is sponsored by Councilmembers Rallo, Sandberg, and Smith. The ordinance changes a stop intersection on Sheridan Drive, which stops for traffic on Maxwell Lane, to a four-way stop intersection at Maxwell Lane and Sheridan Drive." Councilmember Rallo, are you ready to present?
Yes, I am, thank you, Chair Sanders. Ordinance 22-31 is actually sponsored by myself and Councilmember Smith and Council President Sandberg as well. And it is in District 4, which I serve. It's a very hazardous intersection. It currently is a two-way stop that is north and southbound Sheridan, stop at Maxwell, but Maxwell does not stop. And there is, because of topography, there is a blind hill to the west of the intersection, which presents a real problem, presents a hazard to pedestrians and bicycles and cars. And so, what we're proposing here is to install an always stop to increase the order and predictability of that intersection. So, this has been ongoing, the discussion for, I would say, over a year, and it was originally initiated by Stephanie Hatton, who's here this evening. She's going to give a presentation. And just wanted also to say that we have engaged city engineering on multiple meetings. We've had two site visits. And although they don't support the installation of the stop sign, they do not oppose it either. That is, they see it as something that could work and would function and would not be hazardous if it were installed there. But they have various codes that they adhere to, and because of that, they're not going to lend support. But they will essentially honor the decision of the council and install the four-way stop. So with that, Stephanie Hatton, would you like to step to the podium? Ms. Hatton has an excellent presentation that she's given before, and it gives a context of the intersection related to other intersections in the neighborhood.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hatton, and I'll just wait for...
You may want to bring the mic closer, or you...
Or me come closer, okay. Am I host?
You should be able to show your screen.
All right. And then, how do I get out of this? Sorry, how do I get, how do I get this thing off of here? Just, oh, you're not seeing that, okay, never mind, sorry. Okay, hello, I'm Stephanie Hatton. I live at 1414 East Maxwell Lane, just to the west of this intersection. I am from Bloomington, I went to high school here, I went to college here, and for four years, I drove my mom to work at the School of Education, and I went through this intersection from the south side of Bloomington to campus. And so, for four years, and since then, because I've been in and out of Bloomington, I have experienced the dangers at this intersection. It wasn't until I moved in with my four-and-a-half-year-old son, and my husband, and my dog, just before Christmas, that I realized the extent of the problem, and my outreach began. So, I'm going to go through a PowerPoint presentation today with some information that I've gathered over these many months, and then I have a short narrative. And of course, I want to say thank you to everyone who's here today, to Councilmember Rallo, to President Sandberg, and Councilmember Smith for co-sponsoring this legislation, and just thank you for your time and for listening. And if it's okay, I mean, feel free to ask me questions as I go, but it might be easier if we have a session at the end, if that's okay. Okay, so, the area of focus that we are looking at is this one-mile stretch of Maxwell Lane between Henderson to the west and High Street to the east, and the intersection I have circled in red. There is currently half a mile of this stretch that is unencumbered, so we have no stop sign, no yield signs, no traffic calming whatsoever. We currently have an area to the north of Maxwell, which you'll see to the left of this slide, that has no sidewalks, and we have a very large portion of Maxwell to the south that lacks sidewalks as well. And I want to highlight here the east-west corridors in our neighborhood of Elm Heights. The primary corridors are Second Street, First Street, and Maxwell, and I have laid out here where each always stop is currently located. There is a traffic signal, a traffic light, at High Street and Second. There are several speed bumps on the eastern portion of First Street, and then, if you'll notice, on Maxwell, we have very little encumbrance, as I mentioned previously. So this proposal is to install an always stop where you see the large yellow hexagon, I suppose it should be an octagon, and then to warning signs, which will precede the stop sign in either direction, and that's a really key element of installing this always stop. So, for instance, this is an example of something that might be deployed. This is at Rogers Road and Snotty Road at the intersection there, and because of this hill, there are actually two different warning signs, one that says a stop is 500 feet ahead, and the other that says it's 300 feet ahead. This is an example of how people use our neighborhood to navigate their way around the city. So, all of the blue roads that you see are the main north-south and east-west corridors throughout our neighborhood. The orange line indicates how people use this route, which includes this intersection, to travel from the north to the south as a shortcut, and then also how people navigate through this intersection to move from the campus area to the east side of town. And a little bit about demographics, I just wanted to point out, this map is based on the map of the affected housing units that I was provided back in February or March by the Resident-Led Traffic Calming Program. So, these residences were my initial points of outreach, and I haven't been able to get around to see each household, each of the 48. So, the numbers that I have here may actually be higher, but the housing units with children under 18, out of 48, those equal nine. AHUs with adults 65 and over, 16. AHUs with disabled or mobility-challenged individuals, four. And AHUs with pets, six. I, along with Councilmember Rallo and Elm Heights Neighborhood Association President Eric Oost, have had several meetings with the administration, and Engineering specifically asked prior to the July meeting, what makes this intersection different from others, and what makes it worthy of extra consideration for an always stop? So, that's what I want to take you through now. So, this is the total area of the Maxwell Lane and Woodlawn Avenue intersection, which is just a few blocks to the west. So, the area of this intersection is 1,143 square feet. Moving to Maxwell and Sheridan, it is twice the area at 2,297 square feet. The crossing distance from the west to the east at Maxwell and Woodlawn is 34 feet, and the crossing distance at Maxwell and Sheridan is 58 feet. And the crossing distance from north to south at Woodlawn, 32 feet, and at Maxwell and Sheridan, 45. The other great difference is the, or the physical characteristics of this intersection. So, at Maxwell and Sheridan, at the left, I think you can clearly see is compared to Maxwell and Woodlawn on the right, the fact that the two roads do not bisect, and the turn ratey are so great that we often refer to Maxwell and Sheridan as an off-ramp, because traffic traveling from the east to the west that turns north onto Sheridan do not feel the need to signal, they simply proceed, and obviously, that presents a danger to anyone using that intersection, pedestrian or otherwise. And some visuals, so, I'm here standing at this intersection with my dog, and as you can see, it's quite an intimate intersection at Maxwell and Woodlawn. The sightlines are clear, there's parking on the street where, that people actually utilize. At Maxwell and Sheridan, along our section, people do not park on the street, which leads to a much wider road. And then, this is a picture from just to the east of our intersection, looking west, and I think here you can begin to get a sense of the blind hill. Here we are, looking east, heading up the hill toward the intersection, and I have listed here, and in the next few slides, a series of grades of the road. And the reason that I note these grades is because currently, there is no federal guideline about minimum grade on the road in terms of applying traffic calming devices. However, generally, the minimum is 8 percent. And many jurisdictions adhere to, oh, sorry, that maximum, and many jurisdictions adhere to that maximum, like Pennsylvania and South Carolina, and I believe here as well, but others follow a lower value. So, for instance, Delaware has a 6 percent grade max, Minnesota and Pasadena, 5 percent. So, at this point on Maxwell, we have a grade of 8.3. Proceeding to the east, we have a grade of 7.3 and 6.25. Heading toward the crest, we're at 5.2. At the other side of the crest, we're again at 5.2. And then, as we proceed further to the east, we are at 6.25. And this photo actually also gives you an indication of some of the behavior that motorists display when using this intersection specifically to turn east onto Maxwell from Sheridan. They have to pull out really far ahead of the stop sign and kind of peer up and behind them over the hill in order to try and anticipate what could be coming before racing out into the road and approaching a crosswalk, which is less, well, which is one block away, and hoping that someone's not in that crosswalk as they speed towards them. And then, this is a pedestrian's view of a car cresting the hill, and I did, that was, that's my house, and I did have a little guy out there saying, "Please slow down," but he got stolen, so, he's not there anymore. In Engineering's report, there was a focus on the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD, and their guidance. And the MUTCD Guidance for Always Stop Installations states that intersections should, not shall, meet one of the following, and these were the four that were highlighted in Engineering's report. An interim measure while awaiting traffic signals, that's not applicable here. Five or more reported crashes in a 12-month period that are susceptible to correction by a multi-way stop. And Engineering indicated that that was not an applicable criteria. However, I want to highlight the fact that these are reported crashes, and I have spoken with many neighbors who have witnessed crashes that have not been reported. And I also want to highlight that, to me and to my neighbors, this feels like a very reactive approach. So, we are waiting for something to happen. When we know there's a dangerous situation, we could be proactive about helping correct that. And the third point was the minimum volume thresholds that was, that were gathered as part of the Engineering study. And I wanted to point this out because there are conditions warranted by the MUTCD, but they are so high that often residential areas simply do not have a chance at meeting those criteria. So, for instance, there are other studies that indicate that agencies have modified these warrants and have lowered the requirements. And I'd like to especially point out that, so, for the City of Anaheim, California has also done this, and the City of Concord, California, and the City of Escondido. And what's interesting to me is that in Escondido, the warrants now indicate that when unusual conditions, such as intersection geometry, are in play, then the warrants might be shifted in order to take that into account. And then, the fourth point was meeting a combination of the above criteria to at least 80 percent of values. So, those were, those were some of the guidelines that were in the report. However, the MUTCD lists several other considerations that might influence the decision regarding the appropriate street upon which to install a stop sign. And some of these were picked up by Engineering and deemed not applicable, and some were not acknowledged, and so I want to run through those. All of the items in blue were those not acknowledged by Engineering in the July 27th report, but that we feel is applicable to our intersection. And those in red were indicated by Engineering as not applicable, but again, we feel that we might want to take a second look at that. And I will go through these slide by slide coming up. So here, we have a close-up of the intersection, and there are, there is a guideline that indicates to stop the direction that conflicts the most with established pedestrian crossing activity or school walking routes. So, people primarily do walk in this blue line, and this is a walking route to Rogers Benford School. And at the red arrow, this would be a pedestrian who's having to look back behind them to anticipate what's coming before heading east, and similarly, the yellow line for anyone proceeding to Bryan Park to the south is having to anticipate what's coming over that hill before heading south. And so, we do, we feel, need to control vehicle pedestrian conflicts at this location. This slide indicates the need to stop the direction that has obscured vision, and any car heading from the west to the east will have obscured vision of all areas because of that hill. Stopping the direction that has the longest uninterrupted flow, and we have a 1,700-foot section of that between, of road between High Street and Sheridan. And then, I think some of the most compelling evidence that we've found is that there are, there's guidance to install always stops at locations where a road user, after stopping, cannot see conflicting traffic and is not able to reasonably, safely negotiate the intersection unless conflicting cross-traffic is also required to stop, and the need to control left-turn conflicts. And I have highlighted here that we feel that there is a left-turn conflict from every direction. And again, that's because of the hill, and that's because of the odd geometry of how these roads meet. We have all along felt that this four-way stop is a really important first step. There are further things that can be done here, and that we think should be done here, but how those are implemented and when is a further discussion, and I think a phased discussion. So, some considerations might be, for instance, painting bicycle lanes and parking lines onto the road to have some visual narrowing, since we don't have the sidewalk on the south side. We might be able to install some signs such as this one and this, which are located throughout the city, indicating that a hill blocks the view and reducing the speed limit in that section. Installing a "Your Speed" sign, which flashes to show you how fast you're traveling. And then, finally, and perhaps the most intense change, could be the potential reengineering of that intersection. So, a new design for bisection of the roads, crosswalk aprons on the southeast and potentially southwest corner, new sidewalk on the southeast to join to Mitchell, where the crosswalk is currently, and then, we do currently have a non-ADA compliant ramp where the red X is, and that would need to be fixed as well. And here, again, some examples from in-town. This is at Moore's Pike and Smith Road, we have two aprons that were installed, and then, at West Kirkwood and West Third, we have a perforated curb, and we would have to acknowledge some stormwater issues at this intersection, and so this, I'm just trying to start to brainstorm some ideas of how we might approach this. And I will leave you with a picture of a gray morning at this intersection. And can I get a count on my time, please?
I think that was about 15, 15 minutes.
Okay, I'll try and be quick. I am here today as the result of a true neighborhood and consensus-led outreach effort. For me, it is not enough for an initiative to be resident-led singular, to obtain the minimum amount of support from my cohort. Positive change in our community must be the result of a communal effort, and progress must be achieved through listening to and acting upon a meaningful, respectful, and collaborative dialogue. This care for and attention to residents' input, public safety, equitable distribution of funds, and accessibility is why I'm here today after nearly a year of liaising with my neighbors, the administration, council members, the Elm Heights Neighborhood Association, and the wider community to campaign for the installation of this always stop. I first contacted the Engineering Department in January to inquire about placing an always stop here, and I, along with my neighbor, Devonah Stein, who's here with me today, initially undertook the Resident-Led Traffic Calming Program. We would have been required to obtain only 14 signatures out of a pool of 48 affected households. And that would therefore have gone forth to the, to Planning and Transportation and Engineering, who would have decided where to install vertical deflection devices. But we abandoned that petition after a clear lack of consensus. There were many reasons for our objection to these permanent roadway alterations, but perhaps most importantly, for the belief that the primary means to make this intersection truly safe is to legally require vehicles to cease, not just slow down or be calmed. An always stop ensures that pedestrians of all ages and abilities have the time and right-of-way to cross safely. An always stop is customary, common sense, and cost-conscious as a means of making the intersection safer. It may even be a compromise, an effective solution that can be implemented now while we move down parallel tracks to find additional solutions in the future. Further to these simple rationales, an always stop removes the question of liability from this equation, because currently, who is liable here if an accident occurs? Is it the car that has hit the pedestrian because both assumed the other would yield? Is it the pedestrian that got in the way of the car that didn't signal on the off-ramp? Is it the cyclist who proceeds south to the park to be hit by a driver who crests the hill at 35 miles per hour? Or is it the city? Because this concern has now been on the boards for 10 months, and no action has yet been taken. The Engineering Department is responsible for carrying out the city's vision to achieve a safe, efficient, equitable, and sustainable transportation system that works for people of all ages and abilities using all modes of transportation, that is a quote from the city's website, and that would include even walking. Best practices in traffic engineering are rubrics, and they have great value, and are designed with good intention to protect citizens. However, these rubrics are, I would argue, intended to be applied to situations that are also the result of adherence to best practices, where ideal infrastructure is in place, and where all user groups are on the same page, where the system is working. And operationally, I don't feel, and many others feel the same, that this section of Maxwell and this intersection is a shining example. We lack basic pedestrian infrastructure along a widely-traveled roadway characterized by poor sightlines within a residential, walkable, and walked neighborhood. This unusually wide and angular intersection sits adjacent to a blind hill over which people cannot see nor anticipate oncoming traffic. And I will just note that regardless of the 85th percentile speed of 30 miles per hour recorded in the study, speeds in the range of 45 to 50 miles per hour were also recorded. These circumstances make pedestrian safety tentative at best for most individuals, let alone for those who are mobility, sight, or hearing impaired. And I will point out that currently, at this key confluence of vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian traffic, the only way to know a vehicle is approaching the hill and react accordingly is to listen for it and hope that it sees you. Furthermore, the administrative process that we have had to navigate up to this point has been nearly prohibitive. To residents, this is a situation that is not working, that does not adhere to best practices, and that is out of line with the city's vision to achieve a safe, efficient, equitable, and sustainable transportation system. Though the Engineering study presented at the Traffic Commission meeting on July 27th was primarily intended to evaluate vehicular volumes and speeds, there is nevertheless not a single mention about considerations made for public safety, pedestrian safety, or accessibility in that report. I would encourage the authors of future studies to take a more holistic approach, to consider the people who actually use these roadways, rather than prioritizing, quote, "efficient traffic flow for vehicles," or guidelines over residents' lives. We were given the Engineering Department's assurance of neutrality on the installation of an always stop here, and the confirmation that doing so would be safe. Yet, the report states that, quote, "Staff has concerns with the potential of establishing a pattern of installing always stop control at locations that do not meet guidelines." I read this statement as a desire to avoid setting precedent, and I'm disappointed. I hope I've demonstrated that this intersection does warrant an always stop. And, might we all take this opportunity to set a different precedent? To honor the city's duty of care to address public safety and work with residents on safety concerns? To engage in a dialogue, to listen, to respect residents' lived experience, to enact true change in... our community and for our community, and may we set that precedent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hatton. Councilmember Rallo, did you have a few words?
Well, just to conclude, and I, I want to give an opportunity for my cosponsors, if they have anything to add, but I, I want to thank Eric Oost, who's president of Elm Heights Neighborhood, because he reached out to, to his neighborhood. And what I've gathered is overwhelming support for this installation of a four-way stop. I have only encountered one resident who opposes it so far. Overwhelmingly, they do not want speed tables or speed bumps installed. As Ms. Hatton said, one cannot predict the speed of the eastbound traffic when you're approaching southbound and, and south, and South Downs, or Sheridan at Maxwell. When you're looking to the right, which is to the west, you don't know if that car is going 25 miles an hour, if it's going 50 miles an hour. So if you, and what I observe is that, and you can observe it too, that if you just plant yourself there and watch people's behavior, they accelerate hard eastbound, because the majority are going, they're cutting through, they're coming from campus, either to or from campus. And they're going eastbound to go to Mitchell, then down Mitchell to eventually get to Hillside. And so the tendency is to accelerate hard, and that creates obviously a problem, because there is also a crosswalk at Mitchell, just a block to the east. So people crossing there are placed in jeopardy because of people accelerating hard, because they don't know what's coming. So I would just ask the council to support this. The engineering is, is not here tonight, but we met with them after they issued that report, and they're amenable to the stop sign, the four-way stop, and they're ready to implement it if the council chooses so. So I'll turn it over to Council President Sandberg, or Councilmember Smith, if you have anything to add.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I have very little to add to the excellent presentation presented to us by Ms. Hatton. She has done, I think, a remarkable job of countering some of the issues that have been raised by our planning and transportation staff and engineering. We certainly respect the work that they do, but I think with respect to the lived experiences of the people that are on this street, that are, that are having to deal with this particular problematic intersection, I find your work very compelling, and that of the neighborhoods and the neighbors who have come forward to support us this evening. So that is all I have to add at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for the presentation. In my discussions with Councilmember Rallo, one of the things that, in my mind, is always so important is the people on the ground that are right there feel this is a safety hazard and desire this for their neighborhood. And some of our, sometimes, I'm, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a planner, I'm, I'm not an engineer, sometimes I think that we, we have an officious nature, you know, in a city, and we're standing on regulations and things that don't quite hit some kind of metric. And I just, I just don't agree with that. And there's a lot of times where I think you and your neighbors know what, what really is needed. And so it didn't take me long chatting with Councilmember Rallo to agree that this is a really important thing to do, to respond to citizens' and safety concerns. So thank you very much, and certainly I'm going to support this.
Thank you.
So thanks.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. We'll now go to council. We've got any questions of the petitioners? Three of them are up here. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Hatton, and my colleagues for bringing this forward. It's definitely a problematic intersection, and one that I'm very familiar with. What do you say to the professional studies that have concluded that stop signs do not slow traffic?
So I, I have, I have yet to actually see the, the report that, that indicates that. So
Oh, I can, I, I just Googled it, and I got two hits right away.
Okay. So I want to see that from the engineering department. I want to see what they're using. And I'm not, again, as I mentioned in the presentation, I, this isn't all about stopping or slowing or calming traffic. If we wanted to calm traffic, then we would implement traffic calming devices. To institute an always stop is to require cars to stop. And when they do that, if I'm a driver and you're a pedestrian, and I stop and you're there waiting to cross, we have a moment and we have an acknowledgement about right-of-way. And so this goes beyond slowing traffic. Personally, I, I don't, I don't understand how, if a car stops at a stop sign, that isn't an indication that it has slowed, because technically, if you stop, you aren't moving. I understand there are some concerns about cars rolling stops. However, personally, and my neighbors, I think, would agree that in a situation where there might have been a misunderstanding about right-of-way, and a car simply rolled, and I was in the way of that car, I would prefer that situation to what we have now. And I have certainly not seen behavior in Bloomington. And I think we can all agree, we have a multitude of, of stop signs and always stops throughout the city. I certainly have not seen the behavior of cars all of a sudden speeding up and rushing to the next one. Perhaps there are outliers that can happen, but I don't think it's the common practice. And I, I don't feel that that's enough to, you know, again, warrant not having this intervention here, because again, it's about stopping traffic, not simply slowing it, not simply calming it, and allowing everybody who uses that intersection the safe assurance that they can cross and pass.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further questions from council?
Could, could I take a crack at this? I mean, from what little I know, but I've, I've been around engineers enough to know that
To answer, Councilmember Piedmont.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, they're concerned about the overuse of stop signs, because they feel that in terms of behavioral psychology of people is that they'll start ignoring stop signs if they encounter too many. And so does every intersection qualify for a stop or for always stop? No, doesn't. However, I think it does qualify in this case. I would say that it, in terms of the entire, say, stretch of Maxwell, is it, it, will it, will it slow traffic? It depends on the acceleration after the, the stop sign, I suppose. People make up for stopping by, by quickly accelerating, maybe, you know, and then speeding. But in any case, you know, when you stop, you're going to decelerate to zero. So that is going to lend, as Ms. Hatton said, predictability to, to the intersection, because now you have to pay attention to who has the right-of-way at that point. And it gives predictability to pedestrians who are crossing there, and then crossing at Mitchell, that they don't have to run across the road, because traffic is calmed in that, in that area, can help be calmed in that specific area by, by a employee deploying a stop sign. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I'll recognize Councilmember Scamblerie. Do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll now go to the public, if there's anyone for public comment. For those of you on Zoom, if you intend to have public comment, if we have any, Mr. Lucas, please use the raised hand function on Zoom, and we'll recognize you. Or you can use star 69 for mobile devices. If neither of those work, you can please send a message through Zoom or chat on Zoom to our administrator to indicate your desire to comment. Mr. Lucas, you can check and see if we have anyone on Zoom, but in the meantime, we have a person here at the podium, and we'll recognize you. You have five minutes, Mr. Alexander.
Thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. I'm so impressed by Ms. Hatton's presentation. Those intersection diagrams are pure gold. Unfortunately, the proposed remedy doesn't fix those geometric problems. The neighbors here tell you that this intersection is a unique problem. To be honest, I live at 15th and Madison, and that mischaracterization is offensive to me. My God, I would love it if the traffic safety problem in my front yard was as small as theirs. Every neighborhood has this exact same problem. The geometry is not unique. We all have blind hills. Every neighborhood has a dangerous street that kids have to cross to get to the park. Every neighborhood has cut-through traffic. The only thing special about the problem here is the people involved. It's a very privileged and extremely politically well-connected group. They first crossed my radar when these neighborhoods went to the Bike and Ped Safety Commission and begged them to reject a traffic calming project a little west of there. They couldn't be more explicit. They're not in favor of traffic calming. They only care about their own neighborhood. It's not enough they want to bypass the traffic calming program that the, and cut to the front of the line, they are willing to actually sabotage the other neighbors directly. So the first question they're asking you to cite is whether this neighborhood is so special that it should have its own individual traffic calming program bypassing the program that every other neighborhood has to use. This is so damaging to the rest of us. Every neighborhood has this problem. My neighborhood, though, my neighbors are the kind of people who live in the cheapest apartment within city limits. We outnumber this privileged neighborhood, and we use our cars a lot less, but we will never receive this kind of special treatment from this body. The second question is whether the neighborhoods should be able to override engineering and micromanage the traffic calming to choose stop signs. You know, there are a lot of things I would improve about the city's existing traffic calming program. If you want to open that up for all the neighborhoods, it's a conversation worth having. But just briefly, I know only one four-way stop that works well, 11th and Rogers. Usually, people stop completely before the crosswalk, and that's great. I can't name a single other stop sign that really works. For example, just two blocks west there at 11th and Fairview, no one stops. You would think they slow down, and then they stop if they see pedestrians in the street, for example. No, they don't stop. They play chicken with my kids in the street. That's a problem in my neighborhood. That's the lived experience of people living in my neighborhood. And people in this privileged neighborhood should know stop signs don't work, because the stop signs just east there on High Street are so famously ineffective. Everybody knows they don't work. People that live in my neighborhood know about those stop signs that don't work. Stop signs can be a powerful tool, but calming traffic requires both more nuance and more boldness. This proposal will not even solve the problem for this one privileged group of neighbors. We have a severe traffic safety problem in this city. People are dying in the streets. We desperately need to empower our engineers to implement interventions that they know will work. The problems the neighbors point out are real. They're worth solving. This council has a duty to pass broad plans that benefit all citizens. What about the lived, lived experiences of the much larger number of people who live on far busier streets than this one? Do we matter? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I see. Two speakers on Zoom. First up is Chuck Livingston.
Thank you. I'm Chuck Livingston. I live in this neighborhood, and I walk across Maxwell just about every day, typically a few times. So I want to speak in favor of the stop sign. Stephanie covered most of the issues. I, I want to mention one she didn't. From the north, there are five streets total nearby that cross Maxwell: Highland, Eagleson, Sheridan, Mitchell, and Eastside. The only one with a usable sidewalk is Sheridan. The effect is that anyone with walking disabilities, most pedestrians are channeled, if they're heading south, to go down Sheridan. I just don't. I tend to take Eastside or Mitchell, because Sheridan is the riskiest of the crossings. But for some, but I'm able enough to walk down the street when there's no sidewalk. So right now, the situation we have is that people are being channeled through the most dangerous crossing on Maxwell, and basically for its entire length. So it, it will really help. And to the issue about people not always stopping at stop signs, I think we were all taught as children, go to a stop sign to cross or stoplight, but don't trust people to stop. Make sure they do come to a stop. Pedestrians all know this. You try to have eye contact if possible, but you're much better off with, with the option of having people stop than just waiting forever. And in this case, in a, in a blind situation where somebody who's racing, you just won't be able to anticipate. So I really hope that this stop sign does come in soon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who's next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Eric Oost.
Good evening, Councilmembers.
Good evening.
I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to offer public comment. My name is Eric Oost, and I've lived in the Elm Heights Neighborhood since 1988. I'm offering my comments this evening as a resident and as the president of the Elm Heights Neighborhood Association, and offering these comments in support of ordinance 2231. Our neighborhood is requesting an always stop in order to stop traffic at the intersection of Maxwell Lane and Sheridan Drive to effectively support the coordinated safe passage through and shared use of that intersection. Empirical studies and standard practice evidence that stop signs do stop traffic and work to enhance the safety of pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers. Stop signs do literally slow traffic. They stop traffic. And MUTCD warrants do support an always stop at this intersection. As to the blanket claim that stop signs motivate disregard for stop signs, evidence indicates that stop signs are in fact respected. A stop sign is a customary, acknowledged, cost-conscious, and functional traffic control device, and an always stop at this intersection fits and is compatible with the design of the Maxwell Lane roadway and surrounding residential streets. Ms. Hatton's marvelous presentation provides clear and convincing evidence in support of the adoption of ordinance 2231. I respectfully request that you vote to approve ordinance 2231. I will now read a couple of comments submitted by neighbors who were unable to attend tonight's meeting, and ask that their comments be read. The first is from Mary Winterson Phillips, and she wrote, "I have lived at 1410 East Maxwell Lane since 1975, and am very much in favor of an always stop sign at Sheridan Drive and Maxwell Lane. There are no stop signs on the nine blocks of Maxwell between High Street and Highland Avenue, and the area from Sheridan to Highland involves a fairly steep incline. Visibility for cars turning east, which is left from Sheridan, is very limited to see traffic coming from the west up the Maxwell Hill. Visibility for cars in our block on Maxwell exiting driveways or for pedestrians is almost nonexistent, but oncoming traffic from the east picking up speed going down the hill. This traffic also, this, excuse me, this traffic area also includes city's bus stops and a school bus route, plus many children and animals walking along Maxwell. Over the years, I have witnessed crashes in this stretch of road, and narrowly avoided myself being hit several times while backing out of my driveway. An always stop sign at Sheridan and Maxwell would help immensely to improve these unsafe visibility concerns." The other comment is from William Colter, and he wrote, "I have a conflict on October 25th, 26th, excuse me, and may not be available before the committee of the whole meeting. And so I would like to express my support for four-way stop at Sheridan and Maxwell by, by email. Sheridan Drive is part of Sheridan Place, in addition to the city of Bloomington laid out by landscape architect Lawrence M. Sheridan in 1927. Whatever his merits as a landscape architect, he was not a traffic engineer. The focus of the request for the change at the intersection has been pedestrian safety. I fully support my neighbors' request on that basis. For my own part, I seldom if ever have opportunity to walk through the intersection, and I try to avoid it when driving. Occasionally, I forget and find myself heading south on Sheridan, straining awkwardly to look left, looking right, looking left again, and praying that an oncoming vehicle doesn't appear at the rooftop to the east as I depress the accelerator. It seems to me that an appropriately signed four-way stop would address this issue as well. Thank you very much."
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
No, not that I see.
Okay. Seeing none in the chambers, we'll now return the, to council for any final comments. And I'll start with Councilmember Scamblerie, if you have any. And I'll start with Councilmember Scamblerie, if you have any.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to Ms. Hatton, and thank you to the neighbors for the excellent presentation. I appreciate the fact that it included a great deal of data, and it included a great deal of just individual impressions and lived experience, reports of lived experiences in that particular neighborhood. So thank you for that. I'm convinced of several things here. I'm convinced that a stop sign or a multi-stop intersection may not be a perfect solution. And a lot of the materials I've been reading here suggest that, well, people will roll stops or unwarranted stop signs are frequently violated. I think that applies to pretty much anything that is perceived as unwarranted when it comes to traffic control. So while I acknowledge that a multi-stop intersection may not solve every single problem associated with this intersection, I am satisfied, based on the excellent presentation, that it will make a significant difference in slowing traffic, and that it will slow traffic not just in general, but at a critical point in the neighborhood where car and pedestrian interactions are likely to occur. So I appreciate the very good presentation. I appreciate the thought that has gone into this. I don't see a reason, and I have not heard a good reason, that convinces me that a stop sign would not help, or taking it a step further, would actually be dangerous or would create more danger. I haven't heard anything that has convinced me of that. So I'm happy to support this, and thank you to Ms. Hatton and to the neighbors who have been a part of this conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Scamblerie. I'll now go to my left, Councilmember Isabel P. Mount Smith.
Yes, thank you. Is there a traffic engineer in this room or online? I mean, we can, you know, I have personal experience. I appreciate all the work the neighbors have done, but we have no expert here to explain to us why, just with a Google search, pulling up five studies that say that always stops do not slow traffic. I mean, you know, making a big decision like this, which is going to influence a lot more than just the neighbors, it'll influence everybody going through there, is, needs to be, that decision needs to be backed up by professional data, scientific data. And we do not have it. We do not even have here the planners and engineers from the city of Bloomington, which I find very disappointing. Some of you may know that I'm not a big fan of Committee of the Whole anyway, and to come to the Committee of the Whole and not even have any professional engineers or transportation planners here, it just seems like a waste of time. So, I mean, I am, as I said, I've used this, I've been through this intersection since I was, you know, six years old. I know its problem. I'm not convinced that putting a stop sign there is the best idea. I mean, we have professional engineers for a reason. Let's ask them. Let's engage with them. There's no way I can support this before I've heard from those individuals. And as a matter of fact, we have heard from our city engineer that they recommend against a stop sign here. So, I mean, even, you know, there are a lot of things where laypeople might not understand, but does a stop sign? You got to stop. Of course, they're going to slow down. Well, there are reasons why many studies have shown that it's not, doesn't make it safer. It's not supposed to be, a stop sign is not supposed to be a traffic calming device. It's not supposed to be used for people to slow down. It's supposed to be used to decide who, when they come to the intersection, has the right of way. So I cannot support this tonight, and I certainly hope that we have some experts in the room before the final vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
Well, I agree. I think that they're, disappointed the engineers are not here this evening, but perhaps they'll come next time. I think from meeting with them, what they, my understanding, and we will leave it to them to state, is that they feel that this intersection is amenable to a stop sign. There's no problem putting a stop sign. And I want to be emphatic that this is not for slowing traffic, per se, or traffic control in the sense of just taming traffic in the sense of slowing it, but bringing it to a stop, making sure that there is that predictability at this intersection so that cars from all directions know precisely what they're going to do. Right now, that doesn't exist. It's also an assurance to the public that they can cross safely. I know that there are crosswalks where people have the right of way by state law, and if you're in the crosswalk, essentially, you have some assurance, I suppose, that the car is going to stop. But a stop sign really does absolutely determine that the car must stop. And I think that if you're stepping out, you're going to be much more assured if there's a stop sign than if there's no stop sign there. So, yes, you know, I guess I'll extend an invitation again to the engineering staff to come and state their case. I think that, again, I think that they're loathe to put in stop signs because they believe that stop signs could be overused or abused. In my two decades in the council, I think I've asked for only two stop signs. One at Rock Creek and Drive and Renwick Drive, and one at Mitchell and Circle Drive. So it's, this is not a cavalier request. It's a serious concern, and I'm assured that by the engineers that this can be deployed with no hazard, that they're willing to do it. So I guess we will find out more next week then from them.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Early on, when I was elected, I was asked about a stop sign. And I was trying to look up the name of the neighborhood just south of Park Ridge East area, and there was a neighborhood, and the mother was really concerned about a stretch of road that she had asked before to get a stop sign because people were just flooring it through there and going quite fast, and she was afraid for the kids in the neighborhood. And then I had some family members and some parents talk to me about Morningside Drive, and we tried to get a traffic calming device and some slowdowns there. And neither one of those were successful. And, you know, I just asked the question, like, okay, so what's an acceptable amount of risk for people to get run over? And I don't think there's, you know, not really very much. We don't, we don't need to have some kind of risk there. And the other question I ask myself, not being, I'm not a planner, I'm not a traffic expert, or, but it's, what's the harm of putting a four-way stop sign there and stopping traffic, honestly? It's not like it's a superhighway. It's a neighborhood area. And to Greg Alexander's point, I mean, if there's, if there's a stop area there that really needs a four-way stop, you know, bring it on. Let us, let us look at it because we're all interested in the safety of citizens in Bloomington. I just, I just made a comment the other day that, myself, I was, I was driving my vehicle down 10th Street over by the bypass, and I had a couple of students run in front of me, and I was stunned. And, you know, it just was, it's a speedy area there. There's no reason that we should have any more risk than we, than we need for people's safety. We're all about safety, and we're sad when people become, get injured because of the traffic and the speeds. So, you know, what's the harm of putting another four-way stop up? In answer, for me, is there isn't. Let's try it. You know, if the neighbors in six months say, "This is a horrible idea." Okay, well, so what? That's, we're responding to people's safety concerns. So, so anyway, you know, that's, that's been my thinking on it. And so I'm really for, let's give it a try. Let's put it in. Let's respond and err on the side of safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. One of the things that is extremely difficult to do up here, and that's to legislate courtesy, to legislate civility. And for those that say, "This is foolish, this is folly, because people are going to just blow through those stop signs anyway," that's an argument that I just don't buy. I think the vast majority of people, you're going to have your jerks who blow through stoplights and stop signs and think that they can just do whatever and not be respectful and responsible for traffic safety. There's not a whole lot any of us can do about that other than to maybe make a concerted effort to some sort of public relations campaign about, please obey stop signs, because they work. They slow things down to a point, and I think the word that I like the best, I think Councilmember Rallo used it, is predictability. In an always-stop, you have predictability, at least some. I mean, I'm always a defensive driver. I'm always never quite sure when I approach a four-way, will the people, you know, will they stop? You trust that they will. Again, civility, courtesy. I do, and then very responsibly about who then gets to proceed, who came first, who has the right of way in a four-way stop. It slows things down, things down to a point that all ages who are using these intersections, whether you have an accessibility issue or whether you're a mother pushing a stroller, you have a fighting chance at negotiating that intersection, whether it's busy or not. Predictability, I think, is what we're trying to offer the neighborhood here, who has been working on this issue diligently for 10 months. And I'm not going to fault them for having the wherewithal to have someone as smart and capable as Ms. Hatton leading this, and neighborhood associations and their presidents getting people on board with this, and then making the appeal to this council. We're the elected body. We're the ones who are responsive to the community. And when they come to us with this kind of evidence, this kind of, it's not just anecdotal. They've done a lot of hard work on making their case for why this is important, and I believe them, and I represent them, and I'm going to, you know, vote for this clearly. Predictability, civility, courtesy, that's what this four-way all-way will do here. Now, a lot has been made about waste of time, these Committee of the Whole meetings being a waste of time. I don't feel my time has been wasted here this evening. I feel it's important, when these things come to us, that we have conversations about them. We have a week to think about them. The public is made aware, whether they're here in chambers or on Zoom or watching on Cats. They're hearing this conversation, and they're thinking, hey, I need a four-way in my neighborhood. Maybe I need to take steps to approach my council representative and get something going in my neighborhood to make things safer for all ages and all abilities, not just cyclists, not just cars, but for people who are walking. Pedestrians, I think, are really kind of getting short shrift in some of our master planning here. This is a way for us to rectify that. This is a way for us to make it better. My understanding from the planning and transportation and the engineering staff not being here tonight for the Committee of the Whole discussion, which is a first reading on anything that is important that comes before us, is that they've already sent us their report in a packet, and we should have been able to have read that and understood their position by now. And so, of course, I did. I've read their material. I've read their reports and all the commissions that have weighed in on this. But what they failed to do in not showing up here tonight was add that robust piece of the conversation that I think Councilmember P. Mount Smith was hoping for, and that's to hear the other side of the equation. That, to me, is the waste of time, is when people don't show up and participate in these first conversations that then give us another week to think about it, bring an amendment forward if we're unhappy with something we hear. And so I really am quite, you know, not impressed by anyone thinking that a committee meeting is a waste of anyone's time. It's our first opportunity to put things like this out in front of the public and for us ourselves, as the ones who have to make these decisions, to think about it. So bottom line is, once again, I thank Ms. Hatton. I think she's done a remarkable job. To all other communities or neighborhoods who don't feel they're being represented, contact your representative and ask for what you need in your community, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And I too thank Ms. Hatton and sponsors, Councilmember Rallo, Sandberg, and Smith. The first thing I want to say is that, to Mr. Alexander's comments, I want him to know that I heard him. Okay? I get his point. I do not, in totality, agree with every piece of his rationale, but I think the point he was trying to get across, I heard that. So I wanted to say that. Next thing, Councilmember P. Mount Smith raises a very, very good point. It just adds to, and not only that, but we expect staff, and particularly, that's part of the legislation, to be present, to be part of this public discussion. I, for one, will be asking to show my disappointment and share my disappointment. There needs to be some sort of accountability. And I don't mean that to be mean or punitive or anything like that, but just to set expectations. It's one thing for, you know, some of my colleagues to say, "I'm elected. I'm not coming. I got things." I mean, but for a staff person, part of legislation, not to be a part of this, I think, is worth further discussion and analysis. One of the things I'd like to hear from staff is if they don't support this legislation, even though I heard Councilmember Rallo say that they were okay with it, and I think up to this point, but I'd like to hear that from them, from the experts, as Councilmember P. Mount Smith says. But if they don't support this legislation, I'd like to hear their solution to the issue that we're talking about this night, including any fiscal impact that's involved. I'd also like to hear from them, what are the standards with regard to street grading? What are the standards, the acceptable standards? You know, and I heard, we've heard a couple of different standards from different places. Well, what do we use? And what are we using our engineering department to determine that? You know, this intrigued me, and over the last, I don't know, I think we first talked about it, last week and a half, something like that, I've driven through that area. And I do others, not as much, but this one I did in particular. And going east on Maxwell Lane, I'm telling you, when you're going up that grade, you can't tell what's over there. What I was concerned with is what's on the other side of that, you see? It's clearly marked 25 miles an hour. Going up the upgrade, whether you know it or not, unintentionally, see, give it a little bit more to go up the grade. Now, I wouldn't be doing 40 or anything like that, and I'm sure there are some of those. But I'm sure I was over 25 just to go up. You know, it's just a natural thing, I think. And then coming back east, I'm sorry, west, when I've just went up and I know, whoa, you can't see. Well, now I'm wondering, whatever the side street is, Sheridan, there's a person wanting to turn right, or I'm sorry, go straight. And I was coming, going west, I was wanting to cross, going south. And I was thinking, you know, how do they even know what's coming? You can't see. So I'd like to hear engineering solutions, if it's doing something with the grade. I'd also like to hear their, and I've worked with certain neighborhoods with traffic calming devices and those tools. So I'd like to hear about that as well, as part of their rationale. We don't want stop signs. Like Councilmember Smith, I don't particularly see the harm. But, okay, that's my thoughts on that. I'm inclined to support this, but I'd still like to hear more. Councilmember P. Mount Smith?
Yes, I wanted to just clarify. I do not fault the staff for not being here. I don't even know if they were invited to be here. I don't know if they were consulted when this agenda item was scheduled, so I... I don't know if they were consulted when this agenda item was scheduled, so it's not, I wasn't trying to find fault with engineering or planning staff for not being here. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments from council? Okay, are we ready for due pass recommendation?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved to second. We'll start with Councilmember Scamblerie.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
And I too will vote yes. That total was five, one, zero. Okay, our business for this evening has concluded. The Committee of the Whole will rise and report to the full council on the next regular session, which will be Wednesday, November the 2nd. Thank you, and have a good night.